What were comments, any comments by members of the board? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the executive officer.
Thank you. Members of the board, I've been informed yesterday of our AB 109 allocation. I thought it was important to give this information to the board. We'll be receiving a little over forty-four million dollars for this, for the Community Corrections Partnership, forty-three million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. District Attorney Public Defender allotment is eight fifty-two, seven sixty-two. This is more than double than what we have previously received. In talking with the CIO of Santa Cruz County, who is on the committee that makes the recommendation for the dispersment, they faced the problem of nine months of information about the effectiveness of local realignment and felt that they were still not ready to make permanent long-term allocation formulas. A minimum funding base is essential for all counties. So while a final allocation plan is considered, there will be a two-year period during which the funding will remain in place for twelve thirteen and thirteen fourteen. This essentially doubled the allocation for the counties. So it's not what we thought we might get. It will not necessarily be enough to do all that we had hoped to do. So the board might want to consider exploring all the options on the use of this money with probation and hear from the AB 109 committee.
Thank you, Jay. And it's uncertain what is going to happen with the budget cuts that are coming, definitely coming. Although the governor's made it very clear since the implementation of AB 109 that he would allow us to continue to receive the guarantees until we either get a tax increase as he's proposing on the state budget or the legislature puts it in stone in some way through a constitutional amendment. That's all uncertain at this point. I see now names coming up on my screen, so I'm going to start with Supervisor Stone, followed by Supervisor Buster. Supervisor Stone, you had two times, so I'm going to skip you on one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Orr for trying to garner as much as you can of AB 109 funds. I think the governor's tax initiatives are going to face an uphill battle in November. And again, the state is going to have to address some significant funding shortfalls. AB 109 has been underfunded for, since its inception, and we knew that from since its inception by at least one-third. And our local jails are full. We received a hundred million dollar grant. As soon as we can get new jail cells on the ground, most likely in Indio, it's going to be in approximately three years. And I think it puts the public in danger as we unfortunately come under federal orders to kick out a prisoner for every prisoner that goes in. So as a future agenda item, as we explore, you know, how we're going to deal with AB 109 over the next thirty-six months until we have additional jail cells, we need to work with the sheriff, we need to work with our county probation officer, Alan Krogan, and we need to reinvent the work furlough program in the county that does not require the expense and oversight that our jail cells at a hundred and forty-two dollars a day do require. If we could have staff maybe bring that back in thirty days or so, so we have a mechanism to mitigate the kickouts and at the same time curb our costs of incarceration. And let's put some of these prisoners to work on behalf of this county instead of kicking them out where they can cause more crime in the community. So, Mr. Orr, we can do that, I appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Buster.
No, considering we're going to have a more detailed report Supervisor Stone proposes, and I agree with, I'd like to certainly hear this morning, though, from probation and their initial review of the program so far and what they see as productive ways in which they can not only oversee these former parolees, but alleviate some of the jail overcrowding in the future. Mr. Hake, I know, I think Chief Krogan has had a meeting or something this morning, but we'd be happy to hear from you.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, Mark Hake, Assistant Chief, here on behalf of Alan Krogan, who is currently attending the State Association meeting out of town. I believe the comments from Mr. Orr are a hundred percent on point as far as sentencing options and opportunities. I really see this as a, there's no one simple solution to this problem. We certainly have a need for additional jail bed space in this county. However, there are other things that the probation department, as well as the CCP, are looking at and considering to assist in reducing the jail overcrowding. If you look at efforts prior to a defendant being sentenced, the probation department is in the midst of taking over pre-trial services from the courts. Currently under the court's operations, the courts make a recommendation to the judge as to whether or not to release an individual on their own recognizance prior to the disposition of their case. When the probation department takes over those services beginning July one, we are looking at not only evaluating these offenders more in-depth than what's currently happening, making recommendations to judges, but we're also looking at providing a supervision component. And we believe that the judges may be more inclined to release a defendant back into the community pending disposition of their case if there is a supervision component added.
So there's a potential not only after sentencing, but even those that are waiting sentencing to reduce those that are in the jails coming, possibly coming into the system even before their trial, is that right?
Exactly. The, my understanding is approximately seventy percent of the current jail population is in their pending disposition of their case. And so we are looking at making a dent in that number and bringing up jail bed space, in that manner.
How, have you had discussions already with the courts, with the judges? Is there a formal mechanism to really explore this more fully?
Yes, we are, we're preparing to take this over on July one. We've had ongoing conversations with the courts, and we will be presenting our plan to the judiciary probably in June. The other area that we've looked at is probation department's graduated sanctions. This is for the offenders that are supervised in the community. One way to handle violations, if you will, is to simply arrest the person and put them back in court and then disposition of their case. Rather than do that, we have developed and looked at alternative graduated sanctions, if you will. And so that may include increased reporting requirements, it may include mandatory treatment programs. We are looking at enhancing those services and utilizing GPS as a graduated sanction rather than arresting every individual in violation and returning them back to court while they're in custody. We're also looking at custody alternatives to provide to the court. That may include work furloughs or work programs as previously mentioned, house arrest or GPS monitoring type programs rather than incarceration. And then as far as housing options, I think the CCP will certainly explore all possible jail housing options. That may include contracting to CDCR, use of fire camps, and use of private correctional facilities.
Potentially, how many beds are there in the fire camps and the other facilities you were just mentioning?
Fire camps, potentially, you're probably in the neighborhood of approximately three hundred beds with the two fire camps that currently exist in Riverside County. As far as private correctional facilities, we visited a, Chief Krogan has mentioned this to me previously, we visited a location up in the high desert, and that facility, I think, is approximately six hundred beds. So there's available bed space there. I think there's probably some legislative remedies and some needs to work out the mechanics of being able to contract for those services. But it's, I think it's something that we need to delve further into and pursue.
Yeah, I think it's very productive avenues to look at, very, very cost-effective. I know, one of the things that the state didn't give our departments enough time was to actually bring on new personnel and get them trained. How is probation doing in that respect? And are you getting quality people in these new job positions?
Yeah, well, since AB 109 was passed, I'd also note that in addition to 109, we were very successful with SB 678, the bill that was co-authored by Supervisor Benoit. And so we expanded our probation positions under that program. Also, all told, we added approximately seventy-five or eighty sworn positions to the probation department between 109 and 678. To date, we have hired approximately fifty-five deputy probation officers. We have about another forty deputy probation officer positions to fill. So we would have appreciated a little bit more time to ramp up. But October one was the date that we started, and we're keeping pace the best we can and put additional resources into our hiring and background units to hopefully catch up.
Yeah, and strangely, here the state has caused, probably through redevelopment, elimination, a lot of layoffs here in the county. So in some ways, it's good to see at least a portion of those jobs are being recreated in another way in the probation area, so.
The benefit is that there's plenty of applicants out there. The downside is we're having to process a lot of applicants because we get a lot of people that walk through the door having no idea what a probation officer does. They just saw the recruitment was open and they submitted an application. And in the end, with our hiring practices, we're getting very high-quality individuals and very pleased.
Oh, good, that's good to hear, that's good to hear. Well, thanks for that report, that was very promising.
Mark, on the hiring of probation officers, do you typically go after those that already have a public safety background, post-certified, or just anyone?
No, our minimum qualification for deputy probation officer is a bachelor's degree. And so anybody with a college degree is welcome to apply. There is a state mandated test that they have to pass first. If they pass that test, we then put them through an interview process and then an extensive background process.
All right, great, thank you. Supervisor Benoit?
Yes, thank you very much, and thanks for your efforts with Mr. Krogan yourself. One of the bright pieces of this very dark pie is the response and ability of our probation department to take on these new challenges and adapt to the new circumstances. You mentioned the housing of prisoners in alternative facilities, including contracting, but you also said that there was a need for legislation. I was curious, is that legislation at this level or at the state level? I understood AB 109 included a lot of efforts to allow that flexibility, what's missing?
Well, I know the Sheriff's Department has looked closely at contracting with those private correctional facilities and contracting to CDCR and use of fire camp beds. And I think they have some significant concerns about indemnity, the liability, and how the process would work and whether or not it's cost-effective. And as far as the private correctional facilities, whether it's even legal for the county to directly contract with one of those facilities. I believe as a, and the Sheriff's Department maybe will answer better than myself, but I believe the way the legislation is written that we can contract with CDCR, but it's still only CDCR that has the capacity to contract with one of those private correctional facilities.
Okay, you know, I would like to see our county explore all those options. And to the Sheriff's Department, if there's questions about whether we can legally do that, I'd love to hear from you because I would very much be willing to help with the state legislative effort if necessary to clarify that. We've got to have those options on the table. And I think the Sheriff's Department stepping up would like to address that.
Good morning. Steve Dedford, Assistant Sheriff, Sheriff's Department. I think Mark Hake did a very good job explaining our issues and actually on point. I mean, a lot of the remedies that the state had said that we have to deal with realignment is more problematic than it seems. So I do have my staff looking at, and we're working with our attorneys, on crafting some language that we can push through and hopefully change some legislation. The little gift that's been given to us by the state is a little hidden secret. You've got to go back through CDCR to get stuff done, which allows them to let us pay them to take care of the inmates that they've pushed upon us. So we are working on it very diligently, but it's a very tough road to navigate. I think Mark did a very good job explaining our issue, though, with our housing issues and our legislation changes.
Well, just again, I offer any help I can with my former colleagues. I think that would be pretty much a, signed up, so never a good term in legislative terms, but I think it'd be well-received and it would help us make those changes if necessary.
And that's one of the main things that we're working on directly with the CCP, and we will be bringing something back to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. As any legislation that comes forward from the state of California, redevelopment, realignment, never seems to be right the first time. You always have to go back and change it. We're going to go back to board comments, Supervisor Stone has a couple of comments I'd like to also.
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jacobs has made some very good arguments with regard to parking here at the county facility for disabled people that should not pay for parking. And as mentioned, that if you come here to speak to the board on issues of importance to the board, that you should also not pay for parking. I just want to let the public know that the next time we meet, it's going to be in three weeks, and I'm going to have something on the agenda to address those concerns, something for the board to carefully consider. So I appreciate the movement and, again, making democracy more accessible and less expensive, especially with the price of gasoline and people driving all the way from the desert, coming all the way here from southwest, and the additional burden of paying for parking. It certainly doesn't help the accessibility issue, so we're going to be addressing that in three weeks.
All right, thank you Supervisor Stone. Just wanted to add a couple of comments. Last Saturday Supervisor Ashley and I had the opportunity to attend High Road Day, which was always, this is my first time there, but I've heard that it's quite an event. And I experienced it Saturday already, and Barney Barnett sure put on a wonderful event. And Supervisor Younglove also was there, it was nice to see Norton. And then also following that, my wife and I attended an internet safety class at the, excuse me, at the Rubina Library, put on by Library Services and EDA, Barbara Williams, Sarah Mundy, and another young lady whose name I don't recall, but they did a great job. I appreciate the presentation, basically bottom line, we do have secure filters. But it's up to the parents to ensure that their kids are doing the right things and being taught the right things, what to look for and what not to look for, and what to stay off and what not to explore. So despite some of the concerns of certain people, there is a program out there to ensure that our kids are kept safe as long as their parents want them to be safe. All right, with that, I'll go into the state budget. And as you may have heard, the May revise was issued yesterday or released by the governor. It's six and a half billion dollars more than what was projected in January by the governor. What that means is, is that, so now we have a fifteen-point-seven billion dollar state budget deficit. Problem was that they forecasted their revenue way too high. They had a Prop 98 spending increase of one-point-two billion to K-14 education below. And of course, certain cuts related to both the federal courts and government, federal government. The major proposals to make up for those, for that additional six and a half billion dollars is to cut CalWorks programs or redesign CalWorks, coordinate, coordinated care initiative proposal, which will hopefully reduce, or excuse me, which will likely reduce some pilot projects from ten to eight. New county charges for placement of Department of Juvenile Justice individuals are, delivers our placements into the juvenile justice system, excuse me, twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Trigger cuts may be proposed, it's uncertain at this point as a result of what may happen to the governor's initiative in November. We will likely see reductions in funding for the hospital and nursing homes, reductions of IAHS in-home supportive services hours by seven percent. Proposes, of course, on how they're going to deal with the RDAs to the cities. Public safety realignment is still in place, and as I mentioned earlier, the governor has made it clear that that will, that guarantee will stay there. I think we all have concerns of what might happen if the governor's proposal doesn't pass in November. But the bottom line is, in my view, what hasn't occurred at the state level is that the state has not made the cuts where they need to make the cuts, like we have made the cuts here on the local level. All cities and counties across the state are making cuts. Unfortunately, the state has failed to do that. And so their fix, if you will, is to overestimate and then raise taxes, and that, I believe, is unacceptable. And hopefully, when they finally get the point, that that's the only way they're going to address their budget issues by making cuts where we have, then we'll see our balance, or at least the state balance, their budget accordingly. Jay, do you have anything else to add or anything over here from the executive office? Supervisor tonight, no? Okay, that concludes comments by members of the board. So we're going to go into additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, members of the board. Additions are items 3.30 through 3.33, deletions of items 3.24, 9.3. Corrections are to continue item 3.2 to June 5, 2012, and also to continue item 3.15 to June 5, 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Any items to be pulled by members of the board for discussion? Any of them, we'll go ahead and do the motion of the.
Oh, 3.17.
3.17. Is it quick?
No, no, I got the wrong, I'm sorry.
We got it.
3.27.
3.27, I got 3.17. Supervisor Ashley?
Yes, I just want to comment on 2.2. And that was the acceptance of the official canvas for the May 1st Sanger-Gonio Memorial Healthcare District Special Male Ballot Elections. And they approved a bond issue seventy-three percent vote in the pass area to enhance the Sanger-Gonio Hospital, particularly the emergency section, the emergency department. So compliments to the folks in the pass that are voting their own interest, their future healthcare.
Great. Any other items to be pulled? I don't see any, therefore, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion on the Adam and Asher Calendar 1-1, 2-1.
With approval.
Second.
Two or three, I can't see.
And the consent calendar 2-1 through 2-6. Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Taking us to our policy calendar, we had 3.27 pulled by Supervisor Stone. We also are going to pull 3.11. Our comments by our executive officer, and we have a speaker on item 3.28. So those items pulled, unless there are any further requests, Sherri, any others? Seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion on the policy calendar, except for those three items. I'll move approval of the policy calendar with the exception of those three items pulled.
Move.
Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous, now taking us to item 3.11. Mr. Orr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an important initiative and partnership that brings together the nation's largest venture capital organization, the Tech Coast Angels, the Tri-Tech Small Business Development Center, which is one of the only centers in the state that provides mentoring and training to high-tech businesses and the county's economic development agency. This is going to be part of a major EDA effort that's going to be a jobs initiative to make Riverside County the most business-friendly community in California, and I hope in the United States. And this is just the beginning. EDA will work with this corporation to help bring jobs to our region. This company has looked at Riverside County, seen the attractiveness of our county for future development, bringing technology here and technology ideas and new growth to Riverside County. So we're very proud of this Form 11 and this initiative, and it's only the beginning of the jobs initiative that EDA will be bringing forward soon, soon.
Thank you, Jay, and congratulations to, again, our economic development agency, Tom Freeman, Brock Field, the entire team, great job. I'll move approval of item 3.11.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous, taking us to item 3.27. Supervisor Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is another economic development attribute for our county as we seek this financial assistance center in Riverside County. During this tough economic time, we need to provide better avenues for our businesses to be able to get loans. Ever since the federal legislation of Doc Frank, it's made it even harder for businesses to get loans to open and expand. And this is going to assist our businesses with the funds that have been hard to garner. Three years ago, ninety-five percent of the market for products, meat, or grown in this county goes outside the United States. And this is why we've supported our Foreign Trade Office, our Foreign Trade Commissioner. And if our businesses are going to continue to survive and grow, we need to make sure that we have appropriate lending for their expansions. They want to be able to buy new equipment, distribution channels. And this is why we've teamed up to co-sponsor this effort to create the One Stop Financial Assistance Center here in Riverside County, which will be the first in the county that we know of a one-stop financial assistance center to, again, facilitate our exports and assist our domestic businesses as well. So I'm very excited, the program is already, the export-import bank of the United States that we did two years ago has already proven to be successful in that the program has already dispersed over sixty million dollars to sixteen of our businesses around the county. So this is going to be another great asset for our businesses to tap into that is going to hopefully create more jobs in commerce for the many businesses in the county of Riverside. Some of the banks that are partnering with us in our areas, the Bank of the West, California Bank of Trust, Bank of America, Citizens Business Bank, Commercial Bank of California, East West Bank, First Bank, Pacific, Western Bank, Pacific Mercantile Bank, Premium Service Bank, Union Bank, and US Bank. We also have accessibility to an additional seventy-seven banks in our nationwide network of member banks willing to support our exporters. We are also proposing to have these partners, the US Department of Agriculture, the Forty-Nine ED5 investor centers. More than forty-nine states are here in operational. California Pollution Control Financing Authority, Overseas Private Investment Corporation, and the Small Business Association. And we are going to be open for business at eleven AM today. And the website is live and ready to serve our businesses. I would like to thank Lisa Brandl and EDA Brockfield for bringing forward this very important financing tool for our businesses. And with that, I move staff recommendations.
Yeah, I'll second that, but this foreign trade offers great potential, yet there have been significant stumbling blocks or misunderstandings or lack of information for businesses out there who either want to start doing it or expand doing it. And I think the department can and should explain exactly how this center eliminates those obstacles. Could be very useful. I don't know, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Brandl? I mean, doing. I mean, doing business here just locally is always fraught with problems, particularly when you're trying to get, you have a large order and you want to make sure you get paid. But doing it from here overseas is an entirely different kind of issue. So how does this center, what does it do to alleviate those kinds of concerns?
Morning, Board Supervisors. Mr. Orr, Lisa Brandl, Managing Director of EDA. What this financial assistance center does is create a one-stop shop for those businesses that are exporting to other nations. So creation, we already have our Office of Foreign Trade and this is just another avenue for them to work and explore and find funding for their export businesses. There is no cost to the county and there is no increase of staff, time, or labor. So this is just a frontal entrance for businesses to come and help them find financing tools for their businesses.
Why have the benefit of financial institutions who are skilled at providing this kind of support for international trade, is that correct?
Absolutely. And then it also gives them entree to various federal departments that may have funding programs or grants or assistance for those businesses looking to export to other nations. And this is for Riverside County businesses.
You've already done some initial work here. Can you give illustrations of businesses or types of businesses that have already benefited from this?
Absolutely. I'll ask Mr. Freeman to highlight some of our success stories.
Thank you, Mrs. Brandl, members of the board of supervisors, Mr. Orr, Ms. Wallis, Tom Freeman, EDA. Yes, we have several examples of successfully financing businesses in Riverside County to export. Our 15 firms that we've already helped with the XM Bank partnership have been able to get up $60 million in disbursement, but more importantly, we were able to get $99 million worth of products sold in overseas markets. And in one firm, which is Combustion Associates International, which is a Corona-based firm, Supervisor Tavalloni has been out to visit, we were able to get them enough money to add an additional 43 employees to the workforce and meet their orders. Without XM Bank financing, local banks are reluctant to lend. XM is providing the guarantee to the lending institution that the persons placing the overseas orders will in fact pay. So if we don't have XM as a partner with the county, we don't make that loan and we don't create those 40 jobs that Mr. Orr spoke to earlier and the importance of making the county business friendly. No one in the country is offering these services. We were the first under your direction to establish these programs and as Supervisor Assino said, NACO, he was asked to make a presentation about these programs. This is just one more service, as Ms. Brandl's indicated, that we will provide. The expansion here is bringing other financing tools in, our bank partnerships, which we desperately need. Because those folks out there are still having a tough time, as Supervisor Stone mentioned, Dodd-Frank is really causing a logjam on financing. So that's one concrete example and there are 16 more and we hope to do a better job in the years ahead by having your support and continuing to help our businesses out, particularly also in the agricultural field.
Okay, we have further questions. Supervisor Benoit, follow by Supervisor Stone.
Yeah, thank you. I'd certainly applaud the effort. It's another step in the right direction with the largest agricultural area in Southern California in the fourth district. And a huge portion of that going into export is critically important that we have these kinds of services available. At NACO this year, representing the county, I visited with a number of our congressional and Senate, federal senators. And one of the themes on that agenda was, again, trying to get a full-time representative from the import-export bank assigned to Riverside County. It's nice to have the office, but great to have the personnel here too. Can you give us an update on the status of that effort?
Sure.
Thank you, Supervisor. XM was reauthorized last week by the Congress. That was a big fight. There were many that wanted to see XM Bank go away. XM, as you know, does not cost taxpayers a dime, pays for itself in loan fees, but there were opposition to reauthorization. Congress reauthorized it. It's in the Senate this week. Our position is caught up in that debate. Mr. Hochberg, who's the president's appointee to run XM Bank in Washington, has indicated he's willing to meet us halfway on this issue. He has only 16 full-time employees in this category in the entire United States. He's likely to give us part-time staffing, which will be a big assist. This Wednesday, we will be in Supervisor Stone's district, meeting with an aviation company that's selling aircraft overseas and we're trying to help them with about $60 million in financing through XM. So it's working and we're making progress and I do want to thank you for your lobbying efforts, the entire board, but specifically this time Supervisor Benoit who got to meet with our federal legislators and has worked to get that in staffing position. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Stone.
Yes, Todd, this is an incredible program and I'm very appreciative of your efforts, Lisa's efforts to bring it to fruition. But I'm sure that there are many businesses that may not know about the program and the complexities of how they can break through these funding challenges. Are we going to be scheduling any kind of workshops here at the county to educate the small business people that manufacture or provide products that can be exported to give them the assistance as to what is available? Because I think we've helped maybe 5% of the businesses with some great testimonials, but there's 95% of the businesses out there that probably are just not aware, not in tune to this wonderful program that could really enhance their business growth. So you don't have to really answer today, but if we can plan some type of seminars here, maybe at the county in an evening when businesses, small business owners can come and give a presentation here, not charging for parking, and then they can learn about ways in which they could expand their businesses, which hopefully will add employees and reduce our unemployment numbers in the county, so.
Absolutely, Supervisor. We'll be happy to do that and we'll keep in touch with every board member and our CEO, Jay Orr, of our progress. I'd like to thank you all for your support and our CEO, Jay Orr, for helping us with our various tools that we offer to small businesses in Riverside County. Thank you.
Good comments. Appreciate the leadership on this through our Economic Development Agency Department for Trade. And we do have a speaker on this before we go to a vote. Gary Grant.